Oh, this is so fun. You guys are like the Brady Bunch on my screen. This is, this is the best. Uh, you can't see this. You can just see yourselves, right? Or me? Also, I can't hear you. So, because this would be chaos if I could. So, um, it's gonna be a little one-sided, but I have to show you this right now. We're gonna wait, um. Hi, everybody. This is so fun. Who's the dog? Someone's dog is listening, is that? Okay, let me take a photo of, um. Hey, just give me a thumbs up. Make sure you can hear me. Okay, you can hear me again. Thumbs up? Okay, keep that thumbs up because I'm gonna take a picture and then just like, show you what you look like, because this is super fun. It's finding all your faces. Storage full. Are you serious? That's like a really bad time for that. Okay, I think I got one now. Alright. So this is what you guys look like on my screen. Brady Bunch style, but you keep like going back and forth. Different people popping in. Alright, so we're gonna just wait, uh, just a few more minutes, just make sure everybody can be in that wants to be in, and then we'll, we'll get rolling. Evan, if you fall asleep, you're in trouble. He's like half in his bed, asleep. They can see it. Oh, you guys can see the Brady Bunch view. Someone texted me and said you guys can see it. Oh, alright, well, that was pretty dumb of me to do that. But we're just gonna go with it. Alright, well. Now I was excited about it. Alright, let me mess with some settings here for a bit, and then, um, we'll get started in a few. Okay, I'm gonna go to a, um, share screen view here in a few. And if that gets funky, somebody send me a text and tell me it's weird. But we've tested it, so it should be alright. Um. First, yeah, so thanks for joining tonight. Um, let me start, I'll just introduce myself. Some of, most of you, I think, I've met, just looking at your names. Some of you I may, may not have yet. Um, or may not have met me. So, yeah, appreciate your time and, um, I mean, what else do you have to do, right? I mean, here we are. Um, but, uh, so I'm Stephen Pick, um, the executive director. I've been on staff for just under two years. Um, I'm an alum of the program from the early days, so, uh, my first show was Snow White, um, in Vancouver in 2003. Is that right? Yeah, 2003. Um, yeah, I'm getting some thumbs ups, so that must be right. Um, and then I've been away for a lot of years and back, so it's good to be back with you. Um, it's been a wild ride. Um, and it just got a whole lot wilder. Um, so we'll talk more about that tonight. Um, but, uh, let me start with a word of prayer and then we'll, we'll dive in together. Father God, um, you, you're amazing. Um, and I, uh, I'm excited to see, um, even as we gather tonight, what you continue to do in this community. Um, Lord, even broader, broader than that, I, I just see, um, your hand at work even in the midst of so much, uh, global fear and anxiety, uncertainty. Um, it, it doesn't have you worried. Um, and I know that you are an expert, uh, at bringing good out of bad. I've seen that in my, my own life and my family, and I've seen that, uh, throughout history too, as, as we study him, as we learn. And this is one of those moments too, God, that, um, it will be in, in history books and, um, I just pray that they, they will also record the good that you bring out of this. So, um, yeah, I just pray over, um, everybody on this call and those that are watching the video and, and the extensions of that, uh, for our community, Lord, that, that you would help, um, this group of people, um, be, uh, a light and be, um, uh, the psychology term of a non-anxious presence, um, in neighborhoods, in workplaces, even if virtually, um, that your, uh, your name will be glorified through all of this. So, God, I pray against, uh, the disease and those who are sick right now and suffering, or those who are afraid of that, Lord, um, would you be, do your healing work? Um, so thank you again for tonight. I pray for clarity in, in my words, and I pray for, um, your, your will to, to be spoken forth and, um, for willing ears to, to listen. In Jesus' name, amen. Alright, so let me try a share view screen and, um, then I'll kind of dive in. I'm, I'm gonna follow my notes here, so if you see me looking to the side. Um, that is why I want to make sure I'm pretty thorough with what I say and, um, then we will have a kind of Q and A time after. I, I think I'll only speak for 20 minutes. Um, and then, of course, when you give me a microphone, things happen. So, uh, that could be dangerous, but maybe 20, 30 minutes and then, um, well, you can ask questions. What you, uh, what you'll do is you'll send them to, you need to go to your bottom right. Well, the bottom of your screen should have chat in the center there. And then, uh, you'll want to select, uh, in that bottom of the chat bar, "To Bethany", and Bethany will field, uh, questions as, um, mostly she'll just take notes of them and then kind of compile them for the Q and A at the end, and then we'll have maybe a half hour of that, or as long as it needs to go. Um, disclaimer, there's a lot of things we don't have answers to, but we'll do our best. And that may be an answer. So, yeah. Um, you have chat ability to send, uh, privately to Bethany for, for questions you want to have brought up. Okay, here we go, sharing screen, because I'm technologically minded. Sure. Here we go, how's that working? So it's just one, that's just gonna stay there, um, so that you have, uh, all the, all kind of the, I mean, just the details of the event. Um, that's the only slide we'll show, so, and this also makes me smaller, so you don't have to like stare at my face so big the whole time. Alright, so, um, let me dive in. It's, um, it's been, it's been a crazy couple of weeks, and I know for all you guys too, in, in all your different, in all your different spheres, it's been the same. Um, or different versions of the same. I know, um, gosh, it's just a crazy time. People, uh, losing jobs or, you know, with stocks all over the place. Um, so, um, I know we're all in the same boat, um, and just trying to keep head above water, trying to, as far as the journey, we've just been trying to, um, make decisions as information changes, you know, with every 10, 15 minutes and, and go from there. Um, reacting and, and then I think, uh, you guys might probably resonate with this too, trying to balance organizationally, but also individually. Um, uh, caution and hope, right? So like, how, how much do we move forward with something that we really want to see happen versus how much do we need to, um, abide by, uh, you know, what, what health people are saying or authorities are saying, and of course, when they're saying something really firm, we have to do that. Um, but early on especially, it felt like, okay, how much is this? How much is hype versus how much is legitimately scary? So trying to just with, as long with you guys, just trying to sort all that out. Um, so, uh, for that though, I mean, we've had a great, uh, uh, you know how a team works when it's working under pressure? And I have to say, like, uh, the Journey team, and that includes you guys in this community, has been amazing. I mean, um, from staff, board, uh, volunteers, um, our financial supporters, the Journey community, I mean, so much encouragement, so much collaborative spirit. Um, and, and I just love your resourcefulness too. I mean, all these things I hear about of like, oh, we just did this, like, um, you know, uh, a Beaverton family said, "Well, can't have showcase? They're gonna come to my backyard, you know, and we're gonna do it there", you know? Um, and all the, uh, all the internet stuff that y'all do is, is very creative too. And, um, so I just love that you're, um, moving forward and, um, finding unique ways to, to keep being this community and keep connecting. So, that's encouraging to me. Um, so I want to talk, um, hold on, let me make you guys a little bigger here. Because I don't need to see my own screen here, as long as my screen is shared. Okay, if I do this, you're still seeing the screen that I've shared, yes? Okay, great. This is so weird that I can't hear you, but I understand the chaos that that would cause. Um, alright, so, um, what I want to do tonight is I just want to give you, um, there's some changes we need to, to get to, to, for spring, and that's probably not a surprise to many of you. Um, but I want to kind of give an overview picture too of kind of the financial, uh, background for Journey. If you've had a conversation with me specifically about that, then this is probably review, but, um, uh, I, I really want, uh, I think we're all in this together. We always have been, and, uh, so that you deserve to kind of just have a, the straight talk of where things are, even if that's not necessarily encouraging. So, um, but I, I will encourage you to, uh, throughout this. So, um, finances, uh, Journey's a nonprofit, uh, or sometimes we say not for profit to help clarify what that means. It doesn't mean that, that Journey can't, or a nonprofit can't make a profit. It just means you don't have to pay all that money out to shareholders. It just goes back into the company. So actually, a healthy nonprofit does make some profit, um, every year ideally to be able to put back into the program and strengthen it. So, um, uh, that's just a little moment of education there. Um, some of Journey's main sources of income are, you guys, this is maybe so obvious, but show tickets, classes, donations, donations and camps. Um, donations makes that list now actually, um, where it hadn't before. So show tickets, classes, donations and camp. So, um, you know, we're service-based and we rely on people to be together to, to, um, keep the program strong and moving forward. When we can't be together for crazy reasons like this, uh, it becomes really, really tight and really, really difficult. Um, because a lot of the bills, some of them stop, uh, when the programming stops, but some of them don't. Um, so some of the biggest, uh, bills include, uh, program payroll. So all teachers, coordinators, uh, teach, um, as I said, teachers, um, artistic teams, all of that, um, is about $254,000 a year, and, and then there's payroll taxes above that. Um, administrative payroll, 140,000. Venues, rehearsals, classes, shows is about 112,000. I'm, I'm very much rounding here, um, but over $100,000 for, for venues. Um, the warehouse, that's one of the ones that doesn't stop even when, uh, there's a virus. Uh, so that's $5,000 a month. It's, it's over $60,000 a year for the, for the, for that warehouse. Um, uh, other, you know, insurance fees, printing, marketing, thing, uh, things that you wouldn't necessarily think of when you just look at a show. There's a lot that goes into, I'm actually putting it together. Um, royalties, you gotta pay to do those shows. It's about $40,000 a year to do all those shows. So historically, uh, for the finances, uh, Journey's just kind of broken even, you know? Um, it's sometimes not breaking even, right? Even less. Um, breaking even has kind of been a good year. Um, so we've never been able to build up a rainy day fund, and, um, it's raining. It turns out, uh, it's, it's a bit of a storm. So, um, in November, uh, I actually talked about this, so you remember, an annual report going out and then a video to accompany it and just kind of giving a history of kind of the graph of the finances for Journey. And over time, and you can see kind of those, those slim margins. Um, uh, people were really generous and we were able to raise $35,000 there at the end of, uh, the year into this new year. And honestly, we'd be having a very different conversation today if that wasn't done, if that wasn't raised. So thank you for all of you who gave to that. Um, that's essential, and that's why, that's why we, uh, can afford to, you know, buy Zoom and stuff to, to do things like this. Though, I have to shout out, actually, we're using, um, Nathan Goff, who's a Beaverton parent. We're using his company's version. So, again, another, uh, just testament to the, the resourcefulness and, uh, collaborative nature of all of our people. So, thanks, Nathan. Um, so, uh, yeah, to, to the finances, uh, so, things were tight before, they're even tighter now, I guess is the simplest way to say that. Um, you know, we knew we were vulnerable to a rainy day like this, which is why we're trying to, to kind of shore up the, the, the finances underneath. So, um, it's gonna require some challenging conversations, some probably, for us, they feel like pretty drastic measures, um, in order for Journey to continue, um, at all into the future. So, um, that's just reality. That's where we're at. Um, not worried about it. I know that God's will will be done, and we know we're gonna, we're gonna move forward, whatever that looks like. Um, but yeah, there's a couple, couple scary scenarios that we looked at that we're hoping not to have happen. Uh, one scenario we ran would have us about $100,000 underwater by the end of summer. And that's if we weren't able to do any spring programming or, or summer programming. And underwater means we're, we just, we've made $100,000 less, less than we have had to spend. Um, so we don't want to see that happen. There's, uh, uh, different scenarios are producing different things. Um, but again, it's not like there's a lot of choices available, right? A lot of choices are being made for us. So, um, with not having too much in our control, really, um, uh, I think the best chance we have is quick and creative action. And, uh, you know, we need to, we need to be able to pivot and do something different, e- even if it's for the short term. Um, and make some hard decisions too, along the way. So, that's where we're at, and that's what's kind of led to, uh, the, the plan for spring, which, um, uh, I will dive into here too. This is, uh, really fresh. I'm just kind of bringing you guys into the conversation early on. Um, I mean, we've been talking about this as a staff for maybe two or three days. Um, so, yeah, spring plan as we have it, and again, a lot more details will be coming in, in the coming days as we figure it out. But, um, I, I'm actually excited about the pivot. I think it's gonna be a good move. So, uh, we're gonna pivot into fully virtual classes for spring. So using, uh, uh, platforms like this, um, Zoom and, uh, Google Classroom, which maybe some of you are using already, uh, for, uh, your schooling or, um, uh, you know, even universities. I know a lot of universities are using that. So we'll start on April 6th, um, when we were supposed to start most of the spring classes at the, uh, originally. So that's kind of fun, like back to the original date here. Um, because I know we're all in our houses and we need stuff to do, and we need community, and so we want to get that started for us right away. Um, we're gonna run it for eight weeks and, um, but it will look a little different structure-wise. It's not gonna be like a Tuesday night for two hours. It's gonna be, uh, a little bit more varied than that. Um, so, uh, yeah, the curriculum will obviously need to be adapted and expanded, but we're gonna, and actually, there's a lot of, really exciting possibilities for classes that could happen in this type of format that couldn't, uh, in person or not as, not as easily. Um, but we're gonna kind of start, uh, with, with what's manageable, you know, 10 to 15 classes that cool, amazingly and coolly, I think, will be able to open up to all areas. Um, so that we can have that kind of cross-area communication, um, and collaboration that, uh, we, we strive so much for. So, um, um, it'll be a combo, uh, there'll be a combo each class of video instruction and some live interaction. Um, 10 to 15 classes, I said that. Um, we may have up to three teachers per class, but it depends on how many registrants. So one to three teachers where, um, there's a little team teach. If you think about a university style, you've got kind of a lecture and, and not in like a mean, I'm lecturing you way, but like, uh, you give the instruction and then you have lab sections where you can have more individualized attention, um, with, uh, if there's more teachers in it. So, I think that's gonna be really, um, I think that's gonna be a cool feature actually, depending on, on the classes that can employ that. Um, they'll be shorter, so I think, you know, we're, we're shooting, again, we're figuring it out, but I think it'll be more 20, 30 minutes, maybe up to 40. Um, but multiple times a week. So that, um, uh, people don't have to sit in front of a computer for two hours, right? But rather, we can have ongoing instruction and, but in more bite-sized chunks. Um, we'll make it available to, uh, via recording. So if, you know, the times doesn't work for somebody, uh, when the class is gonna be streamed, then, uh, we can do it. You know, they can watch it at a different time. So again, a lot to figure out there, but, um, I think that's gonna be, uh, a, a nice feature too. Um, I know my daughter's gonna be in the, uh, I have a five-year-old and a three-year-old, and I'm gonna put her in the, um, and do like a Journey troopers class. If she, if she can, if she enrolls in that, she'll be sick soon. And, uh, she's gonna love to like dance in front of the camera first, uh, as often as I can make that happen. So that's part of the frequency thing, I think is important, right? Like, let's, let's get us, keep us moving and keep us in, engaged throughout, throughout these crazy weeks. Um, tuition, uh, price will, will stay the same. We don't want to mess with the, the pricing that people have already paid. We'll make it worth everybody's while too, I think. Um, as far as content, you might even get more, uh, depending on the class. You might even get more instruction time than, than you would have, uh, in a live scenario, so that'll be good. Um, and I will say on that, like, if, for, for those who, uh, you know, can't do virtual classes, who've already enrolled or, or, uh, don't want to, or have a, have a conflict, you know, we'll work with them to, you know, uh, they can, you know, donate the, the tuition or credit it forward to a new class or, um, uh, if they need to have a refund as well. So, we'll work with people, but I am excited about, uh, I think, keeping that across the board the same for this time and, and, uh, just focusing on, on the new content and the classes. The plan for, uh, improv will be to move forward creatively in this, in this venue as well, and we're hoping for, um, uh, everything to be settled enough in the world to continue Improv Invasion, which is the annual, uh, summer competition. So we're hoping to just keep that going and get creative with how we, uh, how you do improv when you're not in the room together. So, fun, creative challenges, I think, for everybody. Musical performance classes, we're still working on that one too. That's a big, that's a big piece that we're trying out this year. Um, so, still working out details on how, on how that would look, but, um, stay tuned for that. We'll, we'll have some, a fun opportunity, um, in that vein. Great ideas from teachers. I think, uh, teachers are sending a lot of great ideas. You have a very creative group of people, um, that's leading you, so that's really good. Um, so yeah, we're working out class lists and details, and those will be communicated soon. Um, with this, uh, I, you know, I will just beg on behalf of staff, but I don't, I know I don't need to. But, but just, just, uh, give grace and patience if you would. I mean, this is full new tech and full new format and, um, uh, it's not gonna have maybe the polish that we're all used to with the Journey brand. Right? I think it's gonna, as far as quality, instruction, that's gonna, that's gonna be there, um, but we may have some kinks to work out as we start through this. So if you can, if you can roll with us, uh, I think that'll go a long way. So, um, uh, spring shows is, um, is a hard, is a hard one to talk about. So, um, you probably already embraced yourself for it, but, um, we're gonna need to cancel spring shows instead of postpone them. And, uh, part of that is, I mean, the way I think about it is that we, we kind of need to rip the Band-Aid off. Um, it, instead of just doing the slow emotional peel of like, we think we can, we can't, and it just keeps hurting. So, um, part of that is, uh, I mean, with the increases in vans, concern for safety, I mean, we're all on, uh, house arrest essentially now. We have hoped that that will be lifted soon, but, but we really don't know, of course, where things are gonna go. Um, and so it just doesn't feel wise at this time, as sad as it is, to continue, um, putting staff, community, uh, resources and time. And I say emotional resource too, right? Our emotional capital is something that we are spending on the hope of spring shows right now, that I don't think is wise to continue to do. So, um, I'm ripping the Band-Aid off and it hurts, and it hurts me too. Um, uh, but we, I think that's what we have to do for the organization. Um, and for you guys too. So, so love the plays. I still love these selections, and I love the teams that were lined up to do it. So, you know, I, I gotta be careful not to promise anything. I have no idea what our future is gonna look like. Um, but these plays will be top of my list, uh, again, in our lists to, to keep trying to produce, because they're, they're great. Um, Secret Garden, uh, kind of fits in a, in a slightly different category, um, given that it's sitting there ready to do, and those people who are in Secret Garden are like, "Yeah, we know." Um, so we're still, uh, I just talked to our rep at, um, Mr. Drinkerson again today, and, um, we're just, we're just holding on hope. Stuff's still sitting there. It's ready to go. Even if it's just a, a live stream performance and then strike the thing, you know, we're still holding, holding out to, to at least get to do it. Um, so that, um, but when it's safe and when it's, you know, recommended by, by our authorities and allowed, we're not gonna sneak in the building do Secret Garden. They'll be very secret. Um, they have to be. See, this is terrible. So I like make a joke and then I can't even hear anybody laugh. It's like, so, okay, alright. Alright. Alright, um, yeah, so, hard news there, um, but, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm very sure that's the right, that's the right thing that we need to do. So, um, new tech, uh, I said this, give us grace. I know you will. One more, something's popping up here. Okay, um. So yeah, I'm excited about this shift. I really do think spring, like virtual classes, I think that's right up our alley. I think, uh, you know, we're looking at like, I mean, like acting for the camera. Like, we've never, you can't do that in normal Journey class, but that's so cool. And, and a bunch of other ones as well. And some of the normal kind of classes that we've been, been able to do, but just reimagined in different ways. So I think that's gonna be, um, we're making, we're making, uh, good out of bad. So, um, we're just gonna go forward with it. So this does come though, I mean, you, you know, probably already ahead of me here, but, um, shifting and, and not doing in-person spring opportunities does come with some, some pretty heavy losses. And of course, we talked about the emotional toll of, of wanting to do spring shows and have those opportunities, but of course also, um, you know, our part-time staff. So our part-time staff, uh, show, class coordinators in our warehouse and costume managers. Their jobs are to support shows, right? Uh, and then classes too, but when we centralize, we don't need class coordinators in every area. Um, so their hours, uh, will be, look very, very different than what they, um, had expected to and what we had expected to them for, for spring. So again, um, we hope to be stronger than ever when we're, when we're back to normal. And normal for me too is one of those things I think we have to recognize could look very different. It could be a very different normal in the future. And again, I don't know what that, what that entails yet, but, um, yeah, so I would ask, you know, um, just to encourage and support our, you know, your frontline class and show coordinators, because this is a hard time. Um, we had conversations with them yesterday about this, and they're all very supportive and, and get it. Um, but it's still hard, um, to, to be in the position that, that they're in, that we're in to, to do that. So, um, yeah, reach out and send some love, if you would, for this session. Um, summer, we are still hoping at this point for plans as scheduled as far as camps and, and the show. Um, but honestly, I haven't thought about summer for like two weeks. So, yeah, two weeks from now, maybe, let's get this thing going, get spring classes going, and then we'll see what's happening in the world at that time, and then, you know, make a call as far as, um, what, what summer can or should look like. So we'll just kind of take our cues off of what's happening, um, out and about. So, um, I think one thing that I'm really excited about for just saying, "Okay, here's our plan. We're gonna move forward" is the certainty of it. So I mean, I'm gonna knock on something wood. I think this is fake wood. Um, knock on drywall. The internet doesn't break, because if it does, then there's nothing certain, uh, in our world. But, um, let's say the internet's not gonna break. We can be really sure that we have these spring classes, these virtual sessions that we can count on. We know when it starts, we know when it ends. Um, and we can kind of like, take that off of our list of things that we are uncertain about in our lives right now. So, I'm looking forward to that piece of it. I think it'll, um, also just help us continue to engage as a community, and that's what we're about. I mean, um, always have been and, and we still are. So I, I want to get us together, even, even Brady Bunch style. So, um, I have a note that says, "Add in joke about Elsa", but I don't remember what it is. So I guess I'll just have to skip it. I don't actually have that note. No, it's something about her saying, "We're going into the unknown", and that's what we're doing. We're going into the unknown, and I hear my girls like singing that at the top of their voice in my ear. And I hear my girls like singing that at the top of their voice in my ears right now. But we're going to the unknown together and Olaf's with us. And he's cute and has great one liners. And and we're together. So a couple of ways to help and as I wrap this up and then we'll get to Q and A. Couple of ways to help prayer, I think, is the biggest thing any of us can do right now, just just for the world and for for this community. I listened to a podcast day today about healthy grieving and it's not just grieving of like big things like like death and and things like that, but also just like the loss of a dream is something that like we may not even think that it's affecting us, but like there are ways to actually process through that and and think about that allow that allow ourselves to sit with it. I think it's one thing to just be like, well, God's good. And then like, you know, not deal with all of our emotions. So allow yourself to sit with that. Sit with the sadness. I am trying to. And then, you know, invite God into that and then you can move forward and I think in a healthy way. So but prayer around that is really good because we're not really practiced. I know I'm not very practiced at that. So also, if you pray for wisdom and discernment for God's will, I mean, there's I you guys know me, I have no desire for like my agenda or something to to happen. I really want this to be about what what God's doing through this organization and so but it's not always easy to discern, right? Like, okay, which direction should we go? So I would really, really appreciate your prayers for myself, for the board, for the staff and all of us as we move through this time. So that would be the biggest way to help. Financially, obviously, we need help as well to keep keep going. So you can donate money. I think I put the text to give on the screen down there. So, you know, to do that if you can. I know people are in different situations now, too, job losses. And so this is another like everybody should give. But if you if you do have that resource and want to, then that goes a long way right now. A lot of people also have donated their tickets back, you know, for Shrek and Secret Garden, and that's helped a ton. So we really appreciate you people doing that. Those who couldn't do that, we get it, too. I know times are times are tough. But you can do that, too, with with any tuitions. If you're not going to use them, donating them back and just saying, you know what, keep it if you can do that. It will help a lot. We also could give you a credit towards a future class, too, if if that helps as well. So those are ways to help. And that just, you know, helps us keep saying yes to, and we said yes to some scholarships for spring today, right? That's the thing that we want to do is is be able to continue to to let people into this community, even if parents have lost jobs or times have shifted for people. So yeah, we want to be able to say yes and financial support really helps make that possible. Tickets, the some some for tickets we credited forward to spring show and now we're not having a spring shows. So those will just don't worry about that. The vouchers will be on there and on your account for a future journey show in the regular season. So I just wanted to make sure I said that. And saved fifty emails to Beth. You're welcome, Beth. Yeah. So that's what I guess I've just wrapped up there. Your grace and flexibility and your prayers are really, really coveted. And and I will say, too, the mission and the values haven't changed. We're still interested in integrity. We're still interested in community and we're still interested in quality. It's just going to look different right now. And as a Christ centered community, we are still committed to growing students and families and character and purpose. And man, do we need difference makers in our world right now. That's the last part of the mission statement. See how I worked that in there? It's like really good. It's just weird. There's no, it's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna live with it. I'm gonna move forward, pressing forward. Yeah. So things will look different for now, and and that's just, that's just inevitable. But I I am excited the way this community is going to pivot and we're going to move forward. And let's focus on what we can learn through this time, how we can support each other and how we can grow. And we will come out stronger than this. I I am hundred percent sure of that. I've seen God do that time and time again in my own life and and even in the short time span I've been in Journey, he's just been so clear, like, yeah, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here, I'm gonna, I've got you covered. So this is the the next phase into that. So, all right, let's turn it over to I'm going to have Bethany pop on unmute and have her moderate a little bit as far as just kind of reading some of the questions you may have sent there for me and then answer.
All right. Any fundraisers plan to help with lost finances?
Yeah, that's a great question. So yeah, we did have to cancel. Did I draw on this? I think I drew on this. That's super funny. Okay, we're going to leave that there because it's not worth missing it. Yeah, we did have to cancel our spring gala benefit dinner, which was going to be April twenty sixth at the Hilton. Still hoping to do that in the future, but there's so much going on right now. We need, I feel like we need to just press forward, get the program rolling. And then then we can look again at what that would look like. We may do an in person gala and just plan it for the fall. We may need to do something sooner than that, just financially. And if we can pull that off, it would probably be a virtual gala. You know, some sort of auction online, something like that. So we have some research on our info on that, but again, trying to do one thing at a time. And I think some some brain space will will clear up for me and for the team, once we can get the spring classes underway.
What about Summit?
Summit, yeah. So Summit, for those who don't know, is the time where improv usually entertains us for a bit and then we talk about the next year and what that's going to look like. So Summit, we're going to, we're going to cancel it on the date that it's supposed to be, May ninth or something. Because we honestly, we it's going to take longer than that to figure out what next year is going to look like. So it may be that we're at midsummer before before we're able to talk about what next year is looking like. I hope to have something together before that, but there's a lot that goes into that. Not just plays wise, but also just on the financial end.
All right. Will kids already enrolled in spring session re-enroll in a new class?
Yeah, so we will. We will send details on how to do that. We haven't exactly figured all that out. Some of the same classes that are were going to be offered are now going to be offered virtually. So there may be a number of situations where you don't need to change classes. But Beth, our registrar, who's awesome, is going to be communicating with everybody. And we will figure out everybody's individual situation, how to get you into something that you're excited about.
Will Willy Wonka be an online class?
I don't know yet.
I don't know either.
What's that?
I don't know yet either. Lion King might be.
What's that?
It sounds like Lion King could be.
Potentially, yeah. So we we need to figure out the musical performance classes because they have performance in their title. So they're supposed to be performance. Some of that, I think Alec is working on a creative way to splice things together for Lion King and make a performance via magic, I think, is what it is and in video. But we need to, we're pretty early on in that. So we're going to figure that out. That's top priority this week. Is to figure that out.
A couple of questions regarding students who would have had spring as their last show because they're aging out. Will there be an age extension for those aging out this session? And is there a plan to recognize seniors who are aging out?
That's a great question. I don't know that that crossed my mind yet. Let me write it down right now. Because that's something we I'll put some thought into and impulse some smart people to think about.
And would we think about doing spring shows during the summer?
Yeah, that is a thought that's crossed all of our minds, or I'd say I would speak for myself, my mind. But again, I think it's right now, it's just we're focusing on, let's get spring classes going and then we'll we'll look at what the future might be. So there's a lot of factors. Royalty companies is one of them. Would they allow us to to shift that into the summer? What other productions are happening? Can we support that many shows in the summer? Will audiences come to that many shows in the summer? Will everybody want to vacation all summer because we're strapped in our houses until then? I don't know. And then there's some financial considerations, too. But no, that is a thought that is is in my mind percolating.
And then if you'll just talk about some our summer camps again, kind of what the thought is there?
Yeah, summer camp. So we don't have any indication one way or the other yet, as far as which way this virus will go, or we flatten the curve, will it drop off drastically? Will it continue to grow? So for right now, we're still selling for summer camps. We're still enrolling people in that and it's just such a good time and such a good part of our program. It's, we're not ready to just, you know, cut everything off the calendar in summer. But so again, I think when our head comes out above water in a couple of weeks and we'll be able to look at that and have a little more information, too, as far as recommendations and in kind of the trajectory of the whole COVID situation.
That is a summary of every question so far.
Can't be.
Not quite ready to reveal all the online classes? Yes, no?
Yeah, I I reveal them if if we had them all and I'd be like, do a whole big number.
You want me to list a couple?
Yeah, why don't you list a few that are on our mind? Without without promising that these will be the ones, I mean, we're still trying to.
Promising, we have Stomp in the works with Chelsea Lap. And we have a continuation of year long dance that we're excited about. Oh, thank you, Emily Warner. And also, we obviously are going to need to postpone the track dance. Because that was scheduled for May second.
Yes. We'll find a time to do that. And that one, that one's easy to to re-put on the calendar. There's no reason to just flat out cancel that.
Can students sign up for more than one class?
Okay, so that's an interesting question. We are trying to figure out right now. It depends on how we structure. I'll say it depends right now. But the thought is pretty strong in our minds that it could work, that with these like half hour segments, you could be enrolled into and and be able to, if we offset them enough, right, then you could actually have the the benefit of having a lot of different content. You could be in a monologues class and then a Stomp class, you know, potentially. So that could be really fun. But we just need to make sure that that works for the amount of teachers we have and the amount of students we have. And then, of course, financially, too, because there's a lot of hours that's going to go into for teachers and teacher pay to kind of convert these classes. So that's something we need to look at. But yeah, I like that idea a lot. I think giving people access to to would be a lot of fun.
A new question. What is needed monthly to maintain sustainability?
Ooh, that's, that's a great question. It's it's a little loaded because sustainability have to define. But as far as monthly givers, so we had, two years ago, we had eleven monthly givers. And now we have closer to fifty, I think it's forty four, something like that, monthly giver. So that's grown a ton. Monthly giving is definitely the best way to help, or at least it makes the biggest impact. If you think about your own paycheck for your work. You have an annual income of whatever it is. And if you had to wait all year to get that income, you you'd spend differently and you wouldn't be able you know, buy the sale that you wanted to buy. But if you have your paycheck every month, every two weeks, then you can, you can be more efficient and buy things that you need. So it works the same for an organization. So, you know, monthly giving is super important. But as far as a monthly amount, I'm going to get back to you on that because it really is, it's kind of a moving target, but it's it's in the as far as donations, it's over ten thousand a month. Probably, let's see, I'm doing mental math real quick, probably closer to fifteen thousand dollars a month. If we could have coming in from donations, we'd be in a lot stronger place.
Will there be classes for adults online?
I don't know. Adults, do you want to take classes? I see like three adults in my screen. Seeing smiles. I don't know. Maybe I don't see why not. If if people want to sign up for it, it could be, it could be super fun. Send it, send in what you like, what what you'd want to take. Adults. I see the Burton's going crazy back there. Like, yeah, dad's gonna take a class. Oh, Tanya Walsh raised her hand. How does that work? It popped up a little thing. All right. If you raise your hand, Tanya, maybe just type in your question.
Or two participants. Yeah, chat me your question.
Adult classes, that could be fun. Actually, I was thinking about doing a this is one of the ideas on there, but like a director's workshop. We're also talking about like set design workshop, potentially could be something super fun for to train up set designers that are adults that want to jump into that that circuit. So yeah, let us know if you're interested in something really strongly and because otherwise it's really, it's really challenging to program something and you don't know if anybody's going to sign up for it because it takes effort and work to develop it. But if we have a lot of people saying, hey, we want to do this, I think that could really help us help guide where we go and where we put our efforts. Other questions?
Let's see. Yeah, learning about, I guess that's another question. Sorry. Okay, I'm getting ideas. We're getting ideas for classes for adults and workshops.
Okay, cool. Keep sending them in and we'll we'll sort through that later. Someone's eating a huge bowl of cereal. It looks so good. I don't know if it's cereal. Other questions or ideas?
Oh. Question, how might we support people who have not finished foundations classes? We're actually going to have foundations classes. At least a couple different, so you could, you could take two in spring session. Whoa, whoa, whoa. I'm paying for venues. Okay, with part time staff and paying for venues on hold, we don't need to pay for venues right now. Doesn't that mean we can run leaner?
Yeah, in a way. Yes, in a way we can, we we have to run leaner. There are others, there are some other fixed costs that don't go away, even though we're not doing that. And one of those I've mentioned is one of the big ones is the warehouse. Sixty thousand dollars every year, whether you're using it or not, your stuff's there. So that's, that's a huge one. And insurance is is mostly the same, you know, we some some money, too, for spring has already been committed that we won't get back as far as you know, royalty companies, some of them are working with us, some of them not, you know, are kind of, I mean, they're trying to protect their their organization as well. So some of them are not maybe giving refunds. So there is some money that's already been spent for spring that we're not going to get back for those shows. Yeah, ultimately, our revenues and our, so income and expenditures will go down. But but we'll still be needing the financial support. Hope if that doesn't answer that question really clearly, then chat chat more because I want to make sure that I answer that.
Somebody's asked, how long is the lease on the warehouse space?
I have to look again. I believe it's till twenty twenty two or twenty twenty three. Yeah, and I actually asked them this week, you know, can we make payments on it? Is there any discount? And it was kind of a nope. So we're on the hook for that for now. Just like some of you guys are in like family picture poses right there, like the Bearfords. Yeah, you guys. You just need to be in red and green and it's like a Christmas card. I just, you're so cute.
Oh, sorry. My dog, yeah.
Other questions?
Are the Burton's celebrating Saint Patrick's Day? I actually thought the same thing.
I don't know. Are you Burton's?
They're all in green.
Trying not to get pinched. Trying not to get pinched. All right. Other thoughts or questions?
Nathan is suggesting you go back to Brady Bunch view and unshare your screen.
Unshare my, okay, yes, I can do all of those steps. Stop, share. Did that change you? Oh, is that, you can all see each other now in a way that you couldn't before. Okay.
How frequently will classes be held?
How frequently? You know, we're looking at different structures. I think it depends on teacher availability, it depends on student need. But you know, I kind of default to thinking, excuse me, like you could do a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, half-hour each day kind of thing, or Tuesday, Thursday, something like that.
Is there a way to help support the staff? We could send you our addresses for Grubhub deliveries.
Grubhub. There you go. No, that's a great question. I don't know what I just broke underneath my desk. I don't know, staff? Grubhub was an idea, I mean, that's not a bad idea.
Just kidding, do it.
No, I think just your, I mentioned it before, but just your understanding, patience, grace, as we kind of work out the kinks, is really the big thing. They have really, really full plates now, they already had full plates. So the, you know, as much as you can just encourage and support, that's gonna be the best.
Somebody's asking about our prayer team.
Yeah, you wanna speak to that, Bethany?
Yes, and I'm trying to think of where I have a handy-dandy link for that. But we can make sure, and I'll get that onto our homepage if it's not there.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the way the prayer team has worked is every couple of weeks, Bethany will send out kind of a list of things that are praises and things to pray for. And then people can be doing that. I even had that, I don't know if somebody else maybe came up with this too, but the thought of like twenty-four-hour prayer would be really cool. They look, I sign up and we can, if we could take a slot, who's up till 2:00 AM, whatever. Yeah, I think there's, you know, every couple of weeks, maybe not enough prayer these days. So I think we can do, we can do more than that.
Can people from outside the area sign up for the virtual classes?
Yeah, I think that's a cool thing too, that, you know, somebody in Arizona could be in our class, you know, that couldn't have been before. So if you have people that are, you know, relatives or whatever across the country, then this actually becomes available for them too.
Will classes be held on the same nights that they were originally scheduled?
I don't think so. I think, I think in an ideal world, we could work out some sort of grid where there's class availability for the same class in like, let's say, a Monday morning, but then you could also do that same content on Tuesday night. So that those who are doing, have some scheduled or structured stuff during the day, they can still do that and still have an opportunity in the evening. But no, it's not gonna be the two-hour block in the evening that we've always known.
If quarantines are lifted, would we transition into in-person classes?
Good question, but no, we'd have to stick with what we had set up. It would be too much to try to pivot and the logistics around that would be just too hard to do. But it would make summer possible, which would be great.
Is the Journey office closed right now?
It is, yeah. But we do have access remotely to email. So the office at Journey is still active. Kelly is awesome, she's checking that. And then in addition to that, she can check voicemail. So you can call, email's better because you get a quicker response, but you can call, leave a voicemail, and she can check that remotely as well. But yeah, if you need to do something in person, well, you probably can't get out anyway. So you could mail something and then we do check the mail like once a week.
Kelly said, be sure to clarify how cool it will be to take classes with kids from other areas.
It's gonna be really cool to take classes with kids from other areas. Yeah, actually, I'm really excited about it. That always seems to just breed good relationships when people can do that. So that should be a fun feature, a blessing that comes out of this.
And people are asking about whether or not there will be a live showcase or a live stream for showcase.
Yeah, if we can set up, you know, Zoom's got all kinds of features that we're gonna get to play with. And if there's something that we can do in that way, then we will, but it won't be live in person. Yeah, but something, yeah, maybe, or a compilation of, you know, the final edit of your monologues or something could be shared in that way.
A question about improv. Can you talk a little bit more about how improv team might work? Will you delay starting classes and then have multiple meetings a week instead? I think that means in-person.
Oh, oh, interesting. I don't know. No, we have a call tomorrow or Friday with all the improv coaches and I are gonna chat. And so they're super smart people and they're gonna bring their thoughts as well on how to do that. So we'll figure that out. Evan's like, ah. So we'll figure out how that works. It's gonna be different, you know, but yeah, I know it'll work. But yeah, that's a great thought that we'll consider. Would you push it back, start live? But I also don't wanna wait too long to have you guys keep working together. I just love all the like, you just...
Amy Carrier says, this show coordinator is sure going to miss all of you in the spring.
Yeah.
Oh, Alec, yes, thank you. We're also really excited about a virtual choir class that Alec Martinez has agreed to teach. That's gonna be, he's full of great ideas for these online classes, so we're really excited about that.
Absolutely. I'm excited to see that. Lot of editing.
And Becca says she's gonna miss everyone too.
Any final questions or thoughts before I let you guys go?
Oh, somebody's asking about the production classes, the design classes that are set to support musical performance classes.
Yeah, we need to figure out what those look like now. I think design works great virtually too. It obviously wouldn't, I'd say obviously, but I don't, maybe there's other creative ways I'm not thinking of, but to use them in a performance. But yeah, we'll troubleshoot that and figure out how to make that still happen. Someone's sanitizing their screen. You guys are getting wild out there. All right, final thoughts and questions, and I'll let you guys, you know, go to bed because it's really late. Tired.
Oh, somebody said we should all turn our mics on and sing "I Love You, Lord."
Nathan, would that work? I mean, we could try it.
I could give it a whirl.
Let's give it a whirl.
It might melt down Zoom, but we can try.
All right, if it melts down, love you guys. If it doesn't, we'll call it a night after "I Love You, Lord." Let me pray for us first and then Nathan can break Zoom. God, thank you for tonight. Thanks for just being with us as we talk through what the near future needs to be. And we still have these hopes and dreams for the long-term future. Would you just bless these virtual classes and just fill us with creativity, with joy, with an ability to see the bright side in what this does offer? Even as we grieve in healthy ways, I pray the loss of what we don't have. Pray for all the staff and the board and just each individual in this community to move forward with strength in this time, in their lives, in their neighborhoods, in their houses. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Okay, when I do this, I'm not sure. May just pick one of you and we all hear you, so.
That'll be exciting.
We're all good. Okay, here we go, I'm gonna hit the button.
As in already, I wrote you.
So, music guy, here we go. Love you guys. Thanks for being here, thanks for being all of us. Glad we didn't break it. Have a good night. And then, yeah, we'll just, this week, we'll know more. All of us will know more by the end of this week. All right.